I call the September meeting of the Morrisville Planning and Zoning Board to order, and ask that you join me in a moment of prayer or reflection. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings of this life that we enjoy, including our ability to meet in peace here tonight. We call on you to guide us, provide this board with the wisdom and understanding so that we may make decisions and recommendations that will best serve the current and future citizens of Morrisville. We also ask that you bring healing and hope to those who've been affected by Hurricane Dorian. Bring comfort to those who've lost loved ones. We thank you for the first responders and volunteers who are helping, and we ask that you protect our armed forces and first responders throughout the world. And this week especially, we remember those who died on 9/11, and we pray for those who mourn for them. These things we ask in your name. Amen. So we have a light agenda, and we have a full board. So Chris will be participating but will not be a voting member. But the good news is, I don't think we have any other votes apart from approving minutes and maybe the adjournment. Any changes to the agenda from your side, Courtney?
No.
Okay, and we'll just proceed. Did you all have an opportunity to review the minutes from the August meeting?
Yes.
Any changes, or? In that case, I'll entertain a motion to approve the August minutes.
I move the motion to approve the August minutes.
I have a second.
A second?
Hold in paper saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes approved. Thank you. So we're going to zoom ahead, I think, to, uh... From all the way from item four to item 11, work session.
Peter, that are public. So if they want to make any statements.
Thank you. Eyes in the back of my head. Good evening. Uh, we do have as an opportunity, if you'd like to make any sort of comment in public, you're welcome to do that at the diocese. Thank you. In that case, we will zoom ahead to item 11. And this is our work session which follows on from August, and some ideas that Tim wanted to bring before us and get us thinking about. Do we have copies of Tim's presentation that we can perhaps pull up?
No, I do not have it up on here, no.
Can we hold a hard copy in front of the magic machine?
I can get one up there if you give me a minute.
So just by way of background, um, Tim, who is by now an experienced member of the board, but has not been on the board a lot of, a lot of years, um, I think your freshness and your perspective gave us some things to think about. I appreciate that. And we looked last month at the topics for discussion, for example, the UDO factors. And I wondered if anybody had had any thoughts since August about what sort of factors they would consider, some of the items that come before us. Please.
I'm confused because I'm new of what we're reviewing. It seems like we're partly reviewing and making recommendations for the administrative side and for the process, which I think is very detailed of how you move projects through the planning system before it comes to us versus it's gone through that process and now it shows up to us. So are we looking upstream, making recommendations for how they, when they would ask for traffic studies, or... I'm confused at what stage. I mean, to me, it's very clear the stage is, we meet once a month to review what they're pushing up to us. So what's this document meant to cover, just ideas, or what should be integrated into our board?
Feel free to chip in, Tim, but I think Tim was taking a look at the way we had been doing things, and maybe thinking afresh and thinking, maybe there's a different way that we as a board can act on the items that come to us that are forwarded from staff. Is that a fair perspective?
That's exactly right. So when you think about things that come to us, it is really forward-looking, so it lands here, and how we respond to that, and then, you know, have an advisory role to those things. But then if there is information that's missing, so in the context of when we talk about the traffic assessments, for example, one thing that we'll suggest in a walk-through is a piece of data that might be missing. And so the hope in all of these items that we're proposing is just to take a look at processes that have been done, and I think are very robust, and to do one of two things, either through a discussion to validate that these are exactly the way they should be, and we should continue on, or is there anything that we could do to add or change to make them even better? And so that, that's the hope.
And you currently bring those topics up when somebody presents to you, or is that the normal process? You would just ask that question at that time?
In, in the moment of things being brought up, I think part of it was to see some pattern of what's going on. You can certainly do that, and I think it would default to Peter to kind of look at process, but I think you could, you can bring that up at any time and ask for more information. But I think there also is a pattern or a history of how things are done. So when we look at what might be missing, and this is part to look at our process, but also to perhaps shield the town against, you know, adverse impact should something comes along.
But it's their very first step, they're asking about traffic studies. I mean, as soon as that comes into queue, am I correct? I mean, you're, you're making a decision, that's part of the application process. Do you need a, a traffic study? So that's way back in the process.
Correct. So the way the process works is when we have a pre, it's called a pre-application. So this is before they've even submitted the project. An applicant is then required to give us kind of a basic template, like a general layout of what their project is, two days prior to these required pre-application meetings. At those meetings, we'll get additional information, and those is where we're saying, okay, per your proposed project, you meet the criteria in our UDO that will require a TIA. Sometimes it's a smaller TIA, sometimes it's a full TIA, depending on what they're proposing, but it has thresholds in there that would trigger the requirement for a TIA. And then it goes through a set of procedures of what you do at that point, and then it's a little bit further, the processes. We actually have a consultant that we send that can run a lot of their data to make sure that their paper version aligns, which is what we're looking at. They'll take their CRO files as the technical, and they'll run their CRO data, can confirm that the output in the paper is in fact what's in there, and they can get down even granular into the software to make sure that some of the percentages of distribution are exact. But also before that, we even before they even submit the TIA, we decide what intersections they're studying. We have it within a threshold that we can go and take a look at, and we identify sections. If we find that there's one that may be outside of that but still warrants the need to take a look at it, we can do that, too. TIA then comes through, it's part of the plan, if one's warranted, and it's based on the criteria. And at that point, any of the on-site improvements that are beyond your general turn lanes that they have to do in front of their site, they have to do that. See, for most projects, it's probably a hundred-foot stacking lane, so that's where your car physically sits, and then, and sometimes like a taper of a hundred to fifty feet, and that's that area where sometimes people sit on the yellow line, which I do know, but it's kind of a triangular-shaped piece where you get the lane where your car can fully sit. It can extend those lengths. It can run where the one turn lane sometimes, and even if they're at an actual intersection, it can require upgrades to the traffic signal at that intersection or additional turn things and things along those lines.
Okay.
And it is off-site, it's a former thing, it is off, so we can't require off-site improvements. However, if they're having a negative impact on a intersection that's within that predetermined area that they had to study, even if they're only a three percent impact, and they have to pay a percentage of that improvement. So while they physically aren't doing it, they are paying a percentage, because we do require the TIA, but we can't require off-site improvements if we can get that payment.
So you're, you're suggesting that in addition to that, then we would challenge another round of traffic study?
The fullness of the study. So let's, let's walk through it. So I think that the data that is used through the process leads back to the eighties and is a rolling data. So even with the assumption that all the data is accurate and that they're doing the study, my concern is twofold. First is that rarely, if ever, do we go back and actually test the accuracy of the assessment. So when a project is done, historically, do we get a sense of that what was predicted actually comes to fruition on the traffic impact? So when I think about it, the MAC, I put it in, it's probably another technical term that would be used in the industry, but when I look at it, there's this macro study that's done around traffic throughput. So when they look at any roadway that there's going to be a bit of construction on, they'll look at, well, what is the impact of that? And the way that I described it is almost like water through the hose. So you're going to add a certain amount of traffic at peak hours to, that will, that will add to the overall flow of the daily traffic for that. And that's what the study, as I understand it, primarily covers. And in that, it looks very small. But what I'm concerned is that's not covered, and I think is really important to stakeholders in the community, is what is the micro-study? So if I think about where folks are actually lining up for entry and exit points to a specific place, that is a much bigger impact, and that's not studied, and there's no real effect to that. So that's my concern. It's almost the difference between adding a gallon of water to all the water that's running through a hose during the course of a day versus adding five more people to a line of people getting to drink. And, and that, I think, is the concern that, you know, perhaps we could address more fully when we're deciding on moving a project forward, because that's what people see, I think, in all of our communities. When they look out to any, any area and they see a street that is already backed up, and there's already traffic on it, and then they see that a building or a series of buildings are going up along that same street, perhaps there, it's an intuitive leap that is incorrect, but the thought from those folks will be, it's already backed up, we're going to add traffic to that street, how does that work? And the study we've done doesn't, doesn't add up in that frame. So that, that's what I'm looking to address.
I understand. I, I, I don't think that's with the board, though. I think if you're challenging what planning, the type of report or the type of traffic engineering study that needs to be done, that probably has to happen way up in the process. So if you feel that it's not being done, am I wrong? I mean, that's too late to go all the way through. I mean, he's questioning.
So kind of two. So one, I mean, I understand the point, and to use your analogy, it's, you know, we're studying the water through the hose, we're not studying the people sitting in a line to get to the hose to drink from it. I get that. But you're also, we're making the assumption that the only people driving in Morrisville are Morrisville residents. So there's no good way for us, I mean, you can make the leap that at that point, the ones in line for the drink aren't the ones that were included in the study because they're forty miles down the road or twenty miles down the road, and they're driving, you know, from Cary or from Apex or Fuquay up Davis Drive or up 54 to get to their place of employment. So at that point, if it's a regional issue, that's probably creating issue, or it's a multi-jurisdictional issue that's creating it, how is it then that one developer's position to fix it all? And this is the simplest analogy that I can give that kind of puts it in kind of from the developer's perspective. So imagine that you have a hundred homes in a neighborhood that are built. And when we approve that a hundred neighborhood project, there's an assumption of how much impervious surface that will have, you know, it's the driveway, the sidewalks, you know, in, you know, just other hard surfaces where water's not going to go through. And our stormwater ponds are designed based off of what's proposed to be built so they can collect for that. So home number one comes in and says, I want to build an addition to my house. You know, while they're technically taken away, you know, from the amount of pervious surface, and I think they're impervious, since it's so nominal, we don't require them to make any changes to that stormwater pond. House number two, same thing. House number three, house number four, goes all the way until we got to house number fifty, we're like, oh, sorry, you finally triggered it. It's too much, you need to go back and fix for all your neighbors now and make that pond bigger. And so that's, so that's part of the challenges of the regional system. We legally cannot look at anything off-site. Statute is pretty darn clear, that's given to us by the state. Can we go back then and look at how we calculate our numbers? Is there fine tuning on our thresholds that we want to study? We can do that. You can't go too far, or there could be legislation aimed at jurisdictions that have gone too far, and it goes across the state. So there's, there's a fine balance, so you have to make sure you're fairly in line with some of your standards for not only your neighboring jurisdiction, but potentially jurisdictions that are across the state, because one at Bad Apple really does get new sets of regulations written every single year. But that would be the mechanism. If you said, okay, we, I don't like the fact that we only use peak, this is our number, our peak number should be less, or I don't like the fact that we're doing total trips, that number's too high, we have to decrease, because there's two ways that can kind of trigger it, peak as well as total. So you can go back and take a look at those numbers and traditionally lower them so you can get more TIAs, which could then, so we've had, just so you know, we've had a couple of residential developments come in where they didn't trigger it, but then they've got another phase, named it something different, it's a little bit, and it is different, but even the two combined went and triggered, but see, now there's a third one that comes in. So I think at this point, we are then creating the people that are in line waiting to drink the water because our thresholds are such that it's not cumulative, it's a per-project, not a cumulative project basis. And so, I mean, but that would be the mechanism, if you were to go back and take a look at the regulations themselves and see, are they right fit for our community? What are other communities doing? You know, are there changes that need to be made that way? That would be the formal process for changing it.
Yeah, I mean, one of the frustrations I have had for the last, whatever, year, months we have been on this is that as advisory boards, we are supposed to look at the entire town, right? Not necessarily a, a development per se, right? So how does that development fit in the overall town's strategy or vision, right? And what does, and she makes a good point, that we can't address. I mean, that, it's not that builder's responsibility to fix our traffic problems, but the reality is, Morrisville is at the intersection of everybody, right? So we, we as planners, not even planners, as advisors to the council, have to look at where, should we keep on adding these communities in Morrisville, right? Without having the proper infrastructure to support it. Granted, it may not be Morrisville's responsibility, it may be state's responsibility, and so and so forth, but at what point in time are we going to draw the line of, are we building first and then adding infrastructure? Or do we, do we, I know, right?
That's the way it works.
What, what I'm trying to say is, we have to have that, at least rational discussion around, what is the tipping point, where you kind of say, enough is enough? And, or you say, we are going to approve everything that comes along, and then go figure out what the impact is based upon whatever happens, right? So what, through these charts, I would say, Tim is really kind of challenging us to think in those manners. How do we, what do we consider when we are trying to approve something? Is it just the numbers that we get as projections? Or do we, should we really consider those projections in terms of actuality and see how much did they really contribute? Because the numbers that, as you pointed out, and we asked the consultants, they start from the nineteen eighties, and they look at all of North Carolina, right? Not necessarily just Morrisville and surrounding areas. So, so some of those...
I mean, it's actually not just North Carolina. The manuals take data from across multiple...
And they're updated. It's not just from the nineteen eighties.
Yeah, but, but the reality is, yeah, the reality is, though, those updates don't necessarily take into account the population densities that are particular to our region, because they are, they're looking at it as a larger sample set and then, then bringing it up. Or maybe we just need education on how those numbers are even arrived, right? So that we can have trust in those numbers. Right now, I personally don't trust the projections that are given to us and say, yep, these numbers look, are, are a definitive number that we can put our seal on and say, yep, this is what we'll get.
Can I, well, Peter, can I ask? I looked at the land use plan way back, which was, you were on that twenty, two thousand nine or two thousand seven, and into this time period, when it had the timelines in section three, four through three twenty-one, it had proposed that they budget two hundred staff hours and fifty thousand in consulting fees to address mass transit. And I think the magnitude of what you're talking about is a consulting study, that's still not with the board, so it might be, is it budgeted to do a update of the two thousand and nine plan, or whatever that plan was? It was very detailed, and it showed timelines, and it fell into this last segment that there wasn't a recommendation to have a traffic study. So that's still, that's a good idea that it needs done, but I think it's more a recommendation of if somebody budgeting to have a consultant do that. Maybe that needs updated.
Well, the transportation plan is updated, but let me take the broadest perspective to start with. Every survey that anybody does in Morrisville, the number one issue is traffic. That's universal, I think. It is our responsibility as a board to review what comes in before us. So I think it's our responsibility to challenge that, and to challenge the TIA if necessary, and to challenge the methodology. Now, we may not make any great changes as we look at a particular project, but I think what Tim is doing is, we're beginning to plant some seeds that might then make staff reflect on this, that might make the council reflect on this, and maybe some things would change. We may do a regular TIA, and then we may have some other study as well that looks more regionally. And all of that should feed into our transportation planning. So I think it's a little bit unusual what we're doing this evening, but it's great because it's, it's unusual for us to have such a relatively scanty agenda. Normally, we're working hard, looking at specific projects, so it's great to spend this time thinking about some of the deeper subjects. So that's where we are. I don't think we're, we're not trying to, you know, do what staff does, but I think some of the ideas that we have here might percolate through the system and result in some changes. Is that a fair assessment of what you're trying to do, Tim?
Yeah, I guess the only concern is time. I mean, I realize that there's a much longer time horizon on these matters than you see in other places. My concern is, is that by the time a change is made, things would be already through the, the process. And so, you know, I get the point that we're, we're not responsible for the wider region, but I think it's a little bit of a cop-out on us to say, well, because they're going to build everywhere else, and they're going to do things, we really don't need to take a real hard focus on this. I think, you know, even if everything is exactly right, even if the process as we have it is perfect, I think there's a gap in communication understanding for stakeholders and specifically the community. So when the individual drives down the street and says, there's cars lined up in front of the firehouse, and there's new construction going up for, that's going to increase that, I don't have to be an expert in, in transportation that says that that might be an issue. Now, I could be wrong, there might be a problem with that, but I think we need to have a better, be better prepared to, somebody needs to be better prepared to explain that and understand why that's the case. So I would default to arming the explainers with data around that, and to say, how do we look at that?
It's literally, ooh, data right there, it's there. I mean, we tried this, and where we are now is because we tried this. We tried not to do anything. We tried not to talk to DOT, we tried not to expand any roads, we tried all this stuff in the late nineties, early two thousands, and this is where we are. So we have really two options. We can see that everything else in Wake County just doesn't care what we do in Morrisville, and those cars still drive through here, or we can try to do the best we can, which is to balance all these things, try, you know, try to get a little bit, but we, you're not going to rewrite the transportation manager, you're not going to rewrite the, the calculations that they use in the whole United States to do these traffic analysis. I mean, it's just not going to happen, and it isn't really valid. But we have no, I mean, what evidence is there that these are wrong?
What evidence?
The fact that fifty thousand people live in Apex and Cary and drive through this area...
Do a postmortem. We got to do a postmortem like we would do in any other project.
But we're not doing it, we're not...
They're not going to pay for that, I mean, they're not going to pay for that voluntarily.
Guys, you say we have data, right? What data do we have? We have projections.
Data that is generated by a nationally accepted methodology.
We have projections.
And here we're going to try to redesign it.
No, 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 no.
None of us are engineers, none of us understand, and we're going to redesign it and ask them to redo everything that...
You're, you're missing the point.
Fifty thousand engineers in the United States have tried to come up with the best they can do. Now, could it be better? Everything could be better. They do adjust this stuff. I, I just, you know, there's no evidence that we are, that people are missing things. You're just saying, oh, it's a lot of traffic. I mean, there's a lot more traffic than when I was born here in nineteen seventy. Sure, that's definitely the case. That doesn't mean that anybody has done anything wrong or tried not to do anything the right way.
Not, not saying, not saying that there's anything wrong or that, that there's, there's a process. What I, when I look at any sort of data, it seems that the studies that we do, we don't pay for the validation of that study. So anytime you commission a marketing report, a study at the end of a project, you look at it and says, say, was, did that come up as accurate? And I think what...
I mean, that's additional expenditure for the campaign.
We don't do that, but that's okay. So that, that becomes a question, and that's the debate, is it worth it? Do we put that on a town? Do we put that on, is it the cost of, of development to do that?
Two things, so... Kind of going to give, you know, do we validate kind of the thing? There's two ways that I can kind of answer that. Before I answer that, though, just going to go back, you know, since, I mean, I've been here for fifteen years, there were no TIAs performed. You know, basically, what the developer said is what was put into place. So that was phase one. Then we hired a transportation planner. So that was probably, I don't know, ten years ago or so. And at that point, started developing criteria, so there would be valid, we set the criteria. Sometimes there'd be that, we need a TIA as a statement, but they were defining the criteria, we weren't defining it. So then we went through and started defining that criteria. This is what you have to do. So that way, it wasn't necessarily, they, getting kind of technical, but when they, they basically say how traffic's distributed. You know, it's going to create X number of trips, certain percentage turn this way, certain percentage turn this way, and it starts distributing the traffic out. You can modify your impact through that distribution. So then we started setting our parameters on what could, or the distribution could or couldn't be, we started seeing larger scale improvements as a result. Then the UDO came on board, and we, at that point, if the TIA says you're having an impact, you have to take care of your impact, if that makes sense. So that was another piece of the puzzle that started to come in. So they're having refinement over the years, trying to always right-size it, and that always occurs and will continue to occur, that's never going to stop. So as for validation of the data, as I said, the first time they came through, what they said was the truth. We now hire somebody who does not work for any private, they only work for public entities, so there's no conflict there, that they only, again, like I said, work for municipals, municipalities, and that way, they're peer reviewing for the benefit of the town, and they're identifying issues of potential distribution and things that I've talked about. So I think there's that validation check that's occurring there. We just recently purchased, as part of the public transportation study, this data source that can go back and start validating. We just purchased, we're using it, but it's basically taking cell phone data and following people GPS-wise, and we paid for a version that's granular enough that we can get down to the nitty-gritties, so we can start validating some of the trip, you know, trip distribution. For the really large projects, I can tell you, just by driving it, it's worked. I know what Park West was like on fifty-four before it was built, and I know what Park West's like after it was built, and think of the amount of traffic they put there, and it's a much better intersection, even at peak, than it was before, you know, after it was built, and it built out. So sometimes you'll go and you say that it does have a positive impact, and they had millions of dollars in road improvements. I think one of the biggest challenges that we're experiencing today is past policy decisions. You know, there were very active decisions that the town was not going to put any money into any state roads. It was a decision made, the decision has changed, and as a result, you have the bond for, you know, the McCrimmon project, which is under construction, part of it's open, the other part should open probably first part of next year. And then you have two hundred and sixty million dollars, now Brandon McCrimmon's kind of pulled it up into that, but you have two hundred and sixty million dollars with the road improvements coming in place now, and a lot of that is because the town is having contributions towards it, and that they're paying. So that has made a big difference, is the strategy as to how you get those improvements. The town has to participate, because a lot of times, there's some matching for scoring and things along those lines. So the fact that policies have changed, that recommendations from staff have been heard by the council, and they've made... by the council and they've made decisions, we're getting caught up, but we are definitely behind the eight ball, and there's multiple factors, you know, that were in play, and it's happened over a period of time. And then, you think about it, Harnett County, I mean, we were guilty, we, as Morrisville, were small, we didn't have the capacity, we didn't necessarily require TIA's or things along, or they were developer-driven TIA's, and so the impact was greater. What, you know, people are going to Johnson County now, they're moving out to Harnett County. We don't think that the same thing that we were guilty of twenty years ago is not occurring now, but yet the same people are still traveling here for jobs, you know, and that plays a part. And another reason that really impacts our traffic here is, one, our proximity to RTP. I mean, the reality is Davis Drive is an alternative commuter route for forty. Our traffic studies have shown that. The regional modeling shows that people literally enter and exit as they're coming through Davis. I always say that I feel like we're somewhat resilient proof in some ways, we're fifty percent commercial, fifty percent residential, and our residential mix is basically a third townhome, a third single family, and a third multifamily of that is fifty percent rental, that's including people who are renting homes and things along those lines, and fifty percent ownership. Most jurisdictions don't have that balance, but because we have such huge, heavy office impact, if you look at a lot of the traffic on fifty-four, it's going straight to perimeter park. It goes straight up fifty-four and peels off, barely even going into Durham or barely even happening on five forty. So our success and location has exacerbated our problem, honestly. Certainly back there, so it's not as if we haven't made changes, and I, and I think some of these questions are really good to ask. Can we challenge the given PE data and how TIA's are integrated across the country, whether they're used by small towns, you know, in the middle of Minnesota or New York City? No. We simply can't take a proven PE method and think that we can somehow kick it to the curb and get, it's just not gonna work. Can you take a look at some of our criteria that, what, you know, who submits and who doesn't submit? Yes, we can take a look at that, and we do have the ability to change some of those thresholds. Just keep it in mind, we can't go too far crazy, we still have to be within a reasonable balance.
Yeah, and I, I don't think to, to what Lee was saying, that, that we are, we want to throw away all the PE work that has been done and forth. It's not that. I think what I look for, and I believe Tim looks for as well, is what additional information can we gather that would help us make informed decisions and not just rely on, you know, what we have had so far and, and, you know, still we seem to have issues, right? It's really about what can we do, what can we improve upon with additional insight into information that we have, or we can collect additional information that would help us in our decision-making process.
Exactly.
I guess, so what additional information? I mean.
It, it, it goes down to what was originally posed, is, is the number of vehicles entering and exiting a building. So what is actually gonna be contributed? And I think that, that's really the specific ask. What is a new building gonna contribute to the traffic problem? I think answering that question and then validating that. I think it's a reasonable request. If somebody's gonna put out a estimate of, I mean, and it goes beyond traffic, right? It's the validation of, you know, public resources and number of folks in schools. They put an estimate and we make decisions based on, or advisements based on that estimate, I think it's reasonable to say, hey, are those estimates right five years down the road? And build that into the plan, because if they're not, we should adjust.
Build that into the plan in what way? So let's say you find out that this development's gonna have a hundred houses, a hundred cars a day.
And they have two hundred.
Now it has two hundred. So what are you gonna do with that information?
Well, next, and then when the next one comes up, you adjust.
So then you're gonna then, then change the agreed-upon way?
No, 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 no. I think you adjust your, your forecast, you would do anything. Think of it, think of it as how much resource you need in the organization.
You're saying that by adjusting the forecast is changing this data set that is agreed-upon as the way this is calculated.
No.
That we've already said we can't do.
No, no, no. So hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. We're not changing, we're not, think about it differently. Our experience showed that the P, the, the calculations.
What experience?
Hold on, we are just taking this example that you, you were just talking about, right? That a subdivision came out and that said, they said, based upon all of our calculations and based upon our study, it is hundred cars and, you know, six months down the line or a year down the line, it happens to be two hundred cars. Wonderful, we got that information. That tells us that next time, when next subdivision comes up for approval with similar parameters, same size, same number of homes, same number of, you know, cars that they are projecting, we know that even though the calculations are saying hundred, it really is going to be in the ballpark of hundred and fifty or two hundred. So we as.
So what can we legally do with that?
Okay, so it's, the question is, is it administrative approval?
Or is it, is it our prerogative to decide what do you want to do with it?
So if, so if it's a, you're reviewing the townhome development, it's in front of you, even if you believe based off us taking, just so you know, our analysis, called streetlight, you know, taking the streetlight data, we find that it's not a hundred cars, it's two hundred cars, but the townhome's in front of you, you still have to approve it. You legally have to approve it if it meets our regulations. You don't have a choice. Now, if it's legislative, you can say, we recognize that the TIA says that your unit, based off these sound engineering practices, will only generate this, however, we have found similar developments throughout Morrisville based off the streetlight are generating this, you know, what additional, what are you willing to offer up as a condition of rezoning to help mitigate this impact? If they say nothing, you then have a right to deny or make a recommendation of denial if you think that is not gonna be in the best interest. You do have that. So that's where you have to understand the two different types of approvals. So, you know, we, you, I mean hypothetically, you can have a residential project that, you know, goes, in theory generates a hundred units, but they all have five garages, you know? So you can say, probably not, not that our land's probably large enough to have five garage homes anymore, but you know, but you can say, okay, logically, the math is not working out, even if this known data set makes sense, but if it's resident, but if it's administrative, you still have to approve it.
Yeah, I mean, the ones that, that are black and white, that we can't do anything about, there is not much we can say. But the ones where we can make a decision, this additional information set helps you decide whether you want to approve or not. And, and like we talked about with the UDO, the waiting factors, that's one of the waiting factors perhaps I may want to look at. You may want to ignore it, but I may want to look at and say, you know, I, I don't like it. Right? You may say, yeah, fine, it meets the PE criteria, you go ahead and approve, I may deny.
So the extra data that you're looking for is a verification, a post-development verification or validation, which presumably would be very expensive, but would involve traffic counts and.
But we can use street light data and see what we can't figure. I mean, it's a service that we've prepaid for, for three years. We're just now slowly delving into it because we just purchased it, and so, but we can certainly play with it.
Like, can we go back to like Savannah and see what it is? I don't know if Savannah had a TIA.
I don't even know if it had a TIA.
It would be interesting. I mean, it would, I would be interested in knowing that, I just don't know, you know, what we can do with it. Because it's one thing for us to be talking about, it's like pie and this kind of thing, but it's like, what can we concrete, what can we do that can actually affect change? Not can we just sit back like an armchair person, oh my gosh, traffic, and not really think about what the realities of are. Because so many people sit at home and they say, oh my gosh, traffic, not realizing that this, why this traffic is coming from other places. And we can't just stop people at fifty-five. So, I mean, we need to do it in an educated way, in a concrete way, that we can actually base decisions on, not on feelings. And that, I just don't want us to verge into feelings, and I feel like we're kind of doing that.
And that, that is precisely the point, right? We don't want to base our decisions on feelings, right? So when you have this additional data set, if you will, for whatever, and, and if it is legislative approval, you can use that data to make that decision for us.
Wait, if they get that at reasonable cost, I mean, that's like, you know.
Yeah, for, for us, right? Now, in terms of, for the traffic plans, right, this data, they can actually use to say, you know, henceforth, we will, you know, in Morrisville, this is what is happening, and therefore we'll take the PE data and, you know, adjust the various criterias they have. So it, it, it can help us not only in our, you know, micro approval of a particular subdivision, but it can also help in the, you know, transportation study, land use plan, all of those things.
Yeah. It, it aligns all the way down from the strategic plan, because I agree with, I think the first topic we, we talked about last time was actually adding more rigor and, and removing sort of some of the subjective criteria to things. I think by having that data set, you're able to walk through decision. But, but in addition to that, and I think really what, what wraps around it is the strategic planning of the, the town, right? We have a, an excellent plan that so much thought has gone into. I think, you know, when we look at, you know, some of the guiding principles that we have for build, it'd be hard pressed to stop somebody on the street and get, get them named, or get one of them named. And so I think, you know, when we look at that, it, it becomes the view, where do, where do we see the town growing? What kind of developments we want? So you, you have that sort of thing happen, and then as projects come up, you have some rigorous methodology to kinda put forth a decision around how that gets done. That, that's, that's sort of the goal.
It kind of exists, doesn't it? I mean, there's pictures in everything of what the parking lot should look like, the front of the houses, the stores, the materials of construction. I mean, it's six hundred pages of.
It's six hundred pages. It's six hundred pages. That, I think that's part of the point, and we have guiding principles. There's guiding principles around where we're trying to develop. The, the concern is when you look at, well, how are those factors weighted? What's, what's, you know, what, what makes a decision? One or the other? Can, do, does, do folks really understand decisions that are made? Part of this is really a communication component, how do you go about making decisions? And are those consistent? Because, you know, I think when we run into, we talk about some big, meaty topics, right? So the affordable housing and transportation and mass transit has come up, huge, big issues. How do those fit in into the overall scope and what we wanna do? And I don't think that part is really missing and how that all ties in.
I think it's, maybe it's just my opinion, it was very clear to me of how they go through the funnel to complete a development of a project. The RACI charts are there, the approvals, roles and responsibilities, paperwork that's submitted, how it's reviewed, elevating to come to the board, if that's step for that properly. And I, I understand your concern, you're worried about how do other people understand all that work that's been done, but I don't think that's the role of this board. The role of the board, we meet once a month to say, these developments have been in process for a year, they've been discussed, they may have had other meetings, you know, they're passing through us, and I think, are they all posted? Is everything posted online now of the documents that people can go in and look, or we could go in and look?
So the initial applications and locations are posted on, not the application, but the initial site plan and the initial elevations, that's what the initial developers initially will propose. Ultimately, they do vary, change as it goes through in the location and when it's under construction. And but once it's ultimately CO'd, issued a certificate of occupancy, it's taken down off of that interactive development page.
Yeah, I mean, to me, that is, the desk proceeds, so to use your analogy, right? The desk procedure is there, right? Step one, step two, step three, step ten, no problem, right? What we are talking about is, at some point, you are now coming to a committee for some decision, whatever that decision is, right? What we are really talking about is what criterias are we going to use to arrive at a decision? Or are we just going to rubber stamp everything that comes along our way? To, to, if, if, if we take your approach and say, yeah, everything has been defined, you know, everybody follows the process, then there is no need for this committee. Because as long as you follow the process, as long as you follow everything that is listed in the six hundred page document, what's the point of having this board in the first place?
Because we are part of the non-government side, we are representing the community. So instead of it just going through, it's coming before us, a chance to ask questions, if, if other people can ask questions, but we're assuming that the town has done their work and that the engineering firms that have been engaged and all of the lawyers that have been engaged have run these double checks all the way through the process, and it comes to us and then it goes to the city council. So certainly you can ask questions, but I don't necessarily think that we need to make assumptions that the work was inferior or it wasn't done.
No, 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 I, I don't think we are making that.
So I, I don't, I don't believe that that's the case, and it's not, it's certainly not my intention to suggest that. I think if there's a board that is having a part in a process, you, you need to see all variations of that process come to fruition. So if a bunch of work was done and we get it and we review it and we pass it on to council and they review it, what we're, what I'm looking for is scenarios where this board would take action to say, you know what, this is, is not right, and put a, a vote out and, and push it back. Part of why I was looking to get some objective criteria within the decision-making process is that we could then have a, a valid decision saying, actually, you know, yes, you've done all the engineering work and the traffic studies and all of the, the specific subject matter expertise that is required to get it to this point in the process. However, now we are looking at it from a, a set of guiding principles that we, when we look at the plan, that are important, and we have to think about those, and I'd be hard pressed to get a, a consistent answer around which of those are most important. Is it preserving the environmental conditions of, of the town? Is it, you know, the, the housing and, and the value of housing that's going on? Is it generating all of the different things that we have in the plan, which are most important?
They're almost important.
But they're almost important, then nothing's important. If they're almost important, if they're.
That is literally the point of having a board is, I mean, otherwise, if you did, it would be a rubber stamp. If you had it as an algorithm.
But it is, but it is, that's what's happening. We're going to a situation where it flows through a process and gets to a yes every time. And the question that I'm.
There's been things that we denied that the board, the town council voted to approve. I mean, there's been things that.
That is, that is our prerogative.
But there's been things that we also pushed and nudged and got them to do additional things that were then approved, but it was changed from the day that it came in here and it was bumped and moved, at least in a certain direction. Now, I mean, if you wanna, I mean, I'm still stung by the closure of the Greenway. I mean, here that guy sat right in front of me and he talked to me about how they weren't gonna do it for very long, and they asked for eighteen months. I mean, if, if you guys wanna be more forceful, I mean, I'm there for that. But, I mean, we would have to all decide to do those kind of things, and everyone would have to try to stick to their guns and get things in writing, rather than just somebody standing up in front of people and saying something and trusting they're gonna do the right thing, because it's clear whether, you know, or not. But.
Let me try and bring us back to some kind of order here.
I just think it's wrong to say that we've not, that we've represented everything. I don't, I don't agree that that's the case.
So I think we, we veered from specific details about traffic studies, which is interesting, and now we've taken a more general look, which is, which is good. It's a healthy discussion, it's a rare opportunity.
That's the next, that's the next night anything.
But I wanna ask Kenneth, who's been very silent and very, very forgiving here, do you have any comments to make about this? Do you think we're all a bunch of loonies or?
So I've been listening and it's, and it's interesting, and I was trying to ask a question of Quinny, just for some clarification about what you said earlier with regards to the town's legal obligations. If a development project meets the town's requirements, we have to approve it, is that correct?
That's correct.
So using the example of, there's a projection in five years of one hundred cars a day, and it turns out it's two hundred cars a day. The next time a developer comes, can we say to them, okay, we'll accept your projection, but our history shows that every developer under projects by a certain percentage? And put some sort of a condition on something that will happen if it does exceed it by a certain amount.
You could, so when it comes to conditions, with a rezoning, you can say, you know, we have seen just what your scenario, that it's not the X, it's the X plus every single time, and we have sound data to back that up. You know, we would not be in support of rezoning a project, you know, that did not, where that property owner didn't offer up a condition that addresses this differential that we're seeing. At that point, it's one percent voluntary as to whether or not the developer wants to offer, offer up that condition. If they say, no, I'm happy with it is, you know, engineering principles that have been in place for X years, no. This board has a right to recommend denial. You know, so that's kind of the mechanism for that. When you're, yeah, so when you vote, you can make a recommendation of denial, and, you know, the record will stand that a certain request you have. You don't have to give a reason for your recommendation of denial, the meeting minutes will capture that, and then that will go on to council. And they are ultimately clearly the decision body. You know, I have an advisory role, my department has an advisory role, just like they'll do when it comes to rezoning cases. Now, it gets to these administrative ones that I talked about. We would still have to continue through the process where you have to go back and look at your UDO. How would you modify the UDO that would address this plus number that we're seeing? And that's what you would have to do. But we really couldn't just arbitrarily do, we would have to kind of figure out what's the true data out there and how do we address that? You know, and then we'd really have to start researching and speak to our town attorney. You know, can we say, you know, this modeling that we've used, everybody else uses around the country, let's start using our real-time data. You know, here's a similar project within the development and that's where we're going to pull the numbers from and use that. I mean, that could be an option. I don't know. But those would be the mechanisms for changing administrative decisions. So it's not that you can't change it, you just have to be legally sound when you're preparing that change and make sure we're following statute.
So to answer your direct question, Peter, I think what Tim has put together is really useful exercise because, you know, it's always good to look back at processes, I think, and see, have they worked? And to find better ways to do things. And maybe there isn't always a better way to do something, sometimes there is. So, you know, commend Tim for putting this together. It's always good when, you know, you're looking at factors, well, how much rate do you give to this and why? How much rate do you give to that and why? And different projects might require different factors to be rated differently. I don't know. I guess it's all just, you know, things that are good to discuss amongst themselves.
Thank you, Kenneth. So to try and wrap this up a little bit, you know, it's always great to have a discussion, but it's much better if something comes out of that discussion. So for me, I made a mental note that next time we have a legislative decision, then I will go back and start thinking about some of the UDO topics and some of the things that, that Tim has brought up. And so if I am inclined to approve or recommend approval of a project, then I want to go mentally down that checklist and say, have I really thought all these things through? So that's an action item that I personally have taken away. And we might ask staff in the future, perhaps, to bring up some of the things that are in the administrative handbook that sort of mirror that, which are some of the factors that are looked at, at the staff level. Then on, specifically on traffic, I like the idea of trying to use our traffic light data or anything else that staff can do. Is that something that's reasonable for you and your department to do, Courtney?
We can expl, I mean, we just received it. So, yeah, we can, I mean, I think it's not unreasonable for us to start delving in and seeing what we can't find. I mean, I will say some of the challenges, like if I went to evaluate Kids Creek, I know the TIA didn't show connection, you know, over 147. So I can tell you the distribution would not be the same, but maybe is the total count, you know? And of course, having that come through has changed things up.
Click in the spot and click in a point and then it tells you what happens between those? I mean, I'm just trying to see how this even can work.
I haven't opened it to see. I have an incredible group of people that can, specifically Dylan in this case. So he'll have to go through, I mean, but they used it in order to start determining where potential stops were for public transit. So it's a data set that's used for that purpose. And it's interesting because it can, and there's three different levels. It can actually get down to the pedestrian level, which we did not purchase that one because there aren't enough sidewalks around here for people to walk with it in their cellphone to start pinging off the cell towers. So we just got it down granular enough so we can really start seeing turn movements and all.
Yeah, I mean, to me, something is better than nothing, right?
Well, that's definitely, but I was thinking we were going to be spending tens of dollars for development, so the fact that we have this already is actually.
So, and again, right? How much to weigh that information is up to us individually. It doesn't have to be as a, as a group. Individually, you can take that information and decide how much weight you want to give to that, right? And that perhaps will help us in better evaluating our picture.
Courtney, would it be possible for Dylan to give us a presentation in a few months' time if we have a relatively slim agenda?
Yeah, I can have it. He's always happy to play with that.
Yeah.
I've seen him, I'm like, what are you working on? And he's like, you got to check out what this does. And I'm like, uh huh. And that's why I know it can get fairly granular because he's like, you can look at all this other. But we're still kind of delving there, but yeah, we can do that.
I would add one item to your kind of history of the development of TIAs and so on. When we actually had somebody on staff whose responsibility was transportation, that was a night and day experience because that person was effective in getting a seat at the table. So we were actually on people's agenda at DOT and Campo and Wake. And that, that really made the difference. And it's kind of a tragedy that the small town that it was when I first arrived, 2,500 people, didn't have the resources to have more than one planning director and a part-time assistant because that's really when you need to do the forward planning. But that water's well under the bridge.
I agree with you completely.
Now that we are 28, 28, 100, 1,000 a population, perhaps it is once again time to represent.
So can we move on? Is there anything else in your presentation that you would like to discuss?
I think we should talk a little bit about the slide seven, which talks about vision and strategy. One thing we, we have not had this discussion with the council itself, right? Perhaps this is where we need to understand, we need to have a, how can I say? This is part of perhaps the land use plan discussion in terms of what, what is the goal for Morrisville? Do we want to be a concrete jungle or do we want to be?
Is there anywhere in this entire region that's a concrete jungle? I mean, come on. I mean, that's, that's quite an exaggeration.
I was just using.
People come here and they can't even understand why they can't see the city because of the trees.
I'm, I was just using it as an example to illustrate that we have to have, you know, what is our objective of the next land use plan for, which is for 10 years, right? Once you define the land use plan that will come out this year, is applicable for the next 10 years.
More like 15.
Okay, for the next 15 years, right? What are our goals? Essentially, if we know those objectives, that helps us define our land use plan also, right? We haven't, I don't think we have had this discussion around, is our objective to grow revenue? Is our objective to improve density? I don't think we have had that discussion when we are talking about land use plan.
So there's a strategic plan and that is set by council. That is the direction for Morrisville. So they've defined that. I mean, I can go through and tell you some of the key points because I don't know them off the top of my head, admittedly. I can tell you where the link is because I've gone there several times. Just to give you a bit of ideas, so you have the actual strategic plan itself. Open it up so I can look at it. Called Connect Morrisville. That's it right there. So there really are six key goals. And this, and this gets updated every three years. So the first goal is improve transportation mobility. The second one's thriving livable neighborhoods. The next is engaged inclusive community. They're going to move on to public safety readiness. Of course, my computer's not cooperating. And next is operational access and the last one is economic prosperity. So those are the six main goals.
Are they in order?
They're not ranked in order, they're just listed. And really the mission, and I think these are important, and the vision are also defined in here. So the mission is connecting our diverse community to enhance quality of life through innovative programs and services. The vision itself is sustainable and thriving community that celebrates diversity and inclusion while enhancing the wellbeing of the people who live, work, and play in Morrisville. The values are dedication, integrity, courtesy, and innovation. So you take that, each department then also had to build a work plan. Each individual goals of each employee here. So we actually have goals that we have set every single year that we have to meet as part of our performance evaluations. Those goals actually all tie back. So every single, including myself, we all typically have three to four goals that we have to meet and strategically link back to these goals themselves and even more specifically the objectives. There's some objectives in there as well. So if you're going to ask me what the vision is, my answer is going to tell you this and I'm going to tell you that council's already determined what it is. Now, what has to happen from there is how do we start getting to these thrivable, livable neighborhoods? You know, how do we have engaged inclusive communities? Well, let's talk about how the land is planned. It's defined differently for everybody. And I think, so then that gets at, do you have one type of housing? Do you have multiple types of housing? Do you have, so that's where you have to start getting down to some of the engage the community and find out what they want. So if you look at the land use plan itself, you know, all the different outreach that happened, just to get to four key themes, and I'm not going to tell you, I know them off the top of my head. But, you know, one of them was, there was the environment, you know, preserving some of the environmental features, that was a key theme. Another one was identifying kind of the character, who we are. That was another one. Do you remember the other two? I can't think off the top of my head, but really interesting enough, they all really kind of tie back to what you're hearing a lot in here. So actually at council's next meeting, they are going to go over the vision statements for the land use plan, as well as some of the main goals coming out of that. And it's all related to strategic planning and relating to some of the stuff in here. So two-part, council defines, we have to link back up, but then public outreach, all the people who participate, they're helping to define part of that too. So, you know, one could argue there's 28,000 people and only, you know, 500 people participate? Is that truly the definition? I'm going to say yes, because that's not a bad participation, right? Honestly. And then you can get direction. No different with the affordable housing plan. We had a survey out there. Average survey results are about 1% of populations across the country. We fell just a little bit above 1%. So we're on target with the rest of the country there. It was not a formal sample size. So even though for our population, that's a formal sample size, it's not statistical in nature.
I'm sorry, just a question about, is that, is that valid data? So it's, it's the average of a, 1% is what people get, but is that statistically relevant?
No, it's not. And that's what I was saying. So they're not, so we don't hire a firm that literally randomly pulls different people who live in here to get that sound statistical. The number ends up being the same, but we don't do that for their surveys because at that point, it's like a catch-22. We're only reaching out to get statistical, statistical numbers to make it a valid survey from that standpoint. But with public participation, we are then purposely excluding people who may want to participate if we do that. So there's a challenge. You know, do you go for statistical sound or do you potentially exclude people who would have otherwise participated through that method? We reach out to everybody and we do it through lots of different methods. So then we cut, we move forward and we get the data for that and then they make decisions on where they want to go. And then you start modifying your regulations based off the visions, you know, once they get more formalized as we continue moving forward. So it's a constant process. Basically, you adopt your UDO, by the time you do that, you're going back and updating some of your cop plans again. Because it can take, you know, six years from start to finish all of these items.
Yeah, I mean, so, so I think it, it would help us to at least go back and read it and as we make decisions, see if those decisions fit into the overall strategy, goal, objectives of what we are at all. Because, you know, like you said, this should be another item in our checkpoint is, is this part, does this fit in our overall objective for the town, right? And, and what other, you know, maybe it fits in the objective today, but would it also fit in the objective 15 years down the line? Because by that time, we may want to be something different, right? We talked, last time we talked a bit about green homes. Well, today, none of our UDO or anything talks about how to be much more, you know, energy efficient homes. If we don't start talking about it and wait until 15 years for all the plans to come up, we have already missed the boat on it, right? So those are some of the things that we should consider in our decision-making process is all I would say is we should look for.
Yeah, and these two pieces were linked a bit simply because the first element was just looking at how we make decisions on each individual component that crosses. That's like, this part was really taking into consideration what you brought up around the macro view of what goes on. But I think the piece that, if anything, that was missing, for me at least, is how you draw the line from one to the other. And sometimes when you're looking at, you know, six factors on one side and seven factors on the other, and then they get to be so many that how, it's like, like goals, like we brought up. If you have 42 goals, how much are each worth and how much are you really going to get done? So, you know, is there a way that, that there's some directional insight that's given to the board that says, you know what? When we look at these things, what we're really trying to do is up our density or maximize revenue? What are the key factors that you can consider? And there's some, some weighting of that. Because otherwise, like you said, if everything's important, suddenly nothing is.
Now, as we kind of discussed last time, there was advantages and disadvantages to weighting in that each person really was supposed to come back kind of with what they thought their important criteria was. And you can develop weights for yourself, but to have it in a collective across the board was not necessarily wise. And just for, you know, Kenneth, since you weren't, you weren't at the last meeting, correct?
I was at the joint meeting.
It's not the other one, yeah. So we kind of said, you know, if we had something that we can receive a lot of revenue off, say, you know, ad valorem taxes, but is really minimal impact to services, then I'm going to tell you many storages is all we need throughout town. But I think we always say, we don't want a town full of many storages. Flip side, I said, you know, one of the things that's great is when you actually have senior housing. It allows someone to be born here, be raised here, retire here, die here. You know, that's an option.
Down in cemetery.
But downside to that is public safety is there multiple times a day. So whatever we are receiving in ad valorem taxes, this is not even beginning to most likely cover the cost of emergency services. But they, but they both could rank higher load depending on how you do. So I said, those are some of the challenges that you have with putting weights. And the reason why we always say, you know, it's kind of this general line, legislative decisions are generally discretionary. You know, you have to put some thought into it and you have to think about it and you have to ask, what are those different impacts? But I can tell you, each one of you is going to look at it a little bit differently. And that is why there's seven of you that participate and five of you that make a recommendation when you vote. I think that's kind of the, the great part about the process. And, you know, to really Tim's point, if we're all saying, we don't like, we don't like, and suddenly there's a vote of five zero, you know, then are we really challenging the process? Are we accepting the process and rubber stamping it? So I think there is some balance to saying, we would like to see certain things. And there's things that, you know, if you generally don't like something and you're not supportive, it's okay to not recommend approval, even though you feel like you should because somebody's invested money. I've heard that before. You know, look at all the time and energy. It's part of the process. And that is just part of the process. They know it's not a guarantee, you know, that they will or will not get approval of a project when it's legislative in nature. I also encourage you to go visit sites that have been built, ones that you've been reviewed, ones that maybe you haven't reviewed and say what you like about it and what do you not like about it? The things that you like about it, were they required as code or did the developer exceed the code? We can look into those. You know, the things you don't like, well, is that a minimum code requirement? If so, can that code requirement be adjusted? Those are the important things to do and those are where you can start making true changes into what's happening.
I mean, to me, you made a very good point is, we need a feedback loop between us. In other words, the staff and the advisory board. I would have, I would love to have the council involved, but, you know, keeping them aside as decision makers. At the very least, these discussions are really to help us as a unit, you know, make things better from a process point of view as well as from a town point of view.
Yeah, I'm told somebody recently, you know, Harlan always talked about the pocket parks. You know, that was one of her things when she sat on the board here. And I'm like, has anybody visited one of those to see what they really look like? Is that what you thought it was going to look like? You know, if it's not.
We drive on whenever they come, please.
You know, that was, that's a completely different one, but I can tell you, if you go to, and I can't think of the name of the development, it's escaping me, but it's between Weston, it's the Townhome Development. As you're heading south on 54 as you pass Weston, Townhome Development, that's going to be directly near us.
The one where you can only do a U-turn to get out of it.
Yes.
Oh.
So that one. Go in there, find the pocket park. It was a condition of approval, you know? And, you know, I think, Peter, you're probably the only person that was on the board, but the only person that was on the board, but is that truly what was envisioned? You know, sometimes I see the Pocket Parks and I'm like, it's a, two pieces of wood here with one across the two swings. I mean, is that what you envisioned? And if so, say you'd love to see them and see if they keep adding them. You know, if that's not what you love to see, like in this particular conversation, then we need to go back and reevaluate parkland payment. Reality is our projects are so small, that is probably going to be your parkland dedication and that you should receive and you're known to receive zero funds to help purchase additional parks, build additional parks. You know, so you have to balance out which one's more important. I don't know, you know? Ask the people who live in the neighborhood. They may love that little pocket park and that may be the reason they bought their house. It could be for a bunch of trees there instead, who knows? So, but that put it in perspective values, everybody's a little bit different and that's okay.
So maybe an effort to watch the time close us out, if that's okay?
Yeah.
So just a thank you to you guys, I really appreciate the opportunity to talk through some of these things. You know, to the staff, I think we all really appreciate that your subject matter expertise on this and educating us consistently about all of these things. It really helps work, have us think through and work through decisions. So certainly appreciate that. And to my fellow board members, I really appreciate kind of the pushback and the discussion and all the stuff that comes with it. I think it helps make us better. So I appreciate the discussion, so thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Yeah, it's been an interesting meeting. It's good. I mean, there was a time when I was really worried about the board that we have at the time that, you know, we just approved everything or everything was a group think and there was no discussion and no, no fireworks between members. I, I don't want us to get too combative, but it was good to have a healthy discussion this evening. So one of the things I got from this, which Courtney just suggested, when we were looking at the town center plan, had some great field trips to go and look at other people's town centers. So maybe we could have some field trips to go and look at some existing projects with a critical eye and say, well, this is how it was envisioned and this is what's come. So that, that might be something to consider. So I think we're ready to move on. I think we, we were on item eleven, if I remember, and I printed an agenda but didn't bring it with me, which is very stupid of me. So Courtney.
Yes?
Your, your very full August newsletter.
Ah, so August. There were no new development applications submitted in the month of August. However, we did have a site planning construction plan approved for forty-five forty, phase two. That's on Slater Road. If you drive up Slater Road on the right-hand side, there's one office building. There's a little bit of land next to it in five forty. That little bit of land is now going to be another office building.
Is it about the same basic design as like the one where a line is now?
Yes, I mean, it's same developer, just building out further. There was an annexation approved by town council and office as well as a text amendment related to the payment for construction on public roads. There were two work sessions held. There was an August thirteenth work session on the land use plan and it focused on the town center subarea. Consultant basically prepared a slide by, a side-by-side version where you can slide back and forth what an only surface lot town center would look like and then what a parking, surface lot plus parking deck town center could look like. And then prepared through a video game, Real Engine, basically the simulation with this person walking through and you can take them different places as well. So those were the August activities. Seems busier at my desk than what's reflected there, but those are the August activities. Staff, the only other little staff update I have, most of you are aware, but for those of you aren't, it's not, everybody was at the joint work session. My last meeting here will be on October third with each of you because my last date is October fourth. I have accepted a position in the town of Lake Forest, which for me will shorten my commute by what's going to feel like a lifetime. So no, it's really close. I actually went through and was shown recently different offices I could choose from. And one, once the leaves fall, the tree actually can see where my daughter lives and dances, basically. So through the woods, if you will, once the, really pretty oak tree loses its leaves. So I get to choose either their downtown or this tree and I get to make a decision. And they said I could choose whatever and my response was, which one that has good A C and heating control? You know, and they both felt like, well, we had a female that used to sit there and she was always cold and he was like, it's perfect. I'm like, great. It's going to be cold both is what I'm really hearing. I've been spoiled with having my own thermostat for years now. So it's kind of a perk. So sad. And before that, even though it wasn't my own thermostat, I had the keys that controlled the thermostat. Somehow I was given that privilege years ago, so it was really bad I could control it for the entire wing of the building as well. So that part I'm going to miss is my little thermostat in my door that opens up outside. I'm like, don't get that on the third floor. But just wanted to say thank you for everything that you do. The next meeting's going to be a long one, I do believe, so I probably wanted to say a little bit now. I appreciate what you do. I mean, you take your time to make Morrisville a better place. I've had a great opportunity to work with each of you, some of shorter than others, but I've lost track of the many, many great people probably that I've worked through over the years. So for that, I am a one lucky girl. I spent fifteen years here working with some really great people. You know, I, believe it or not, the Wal- somebody involved in the Walmart development heard, they don't, they're not even local, they're out of New York, gave me a call and said, I heard rumor mill. They're like, well, you've been a pleasure to work with, thanks. And I'm like, I didn't love that project, but okay. At least I didn't make you mad enough that you wouldn't call and say thank you. You know, this person actually helped move a tobacco barn off of their property to where it is now. I remember just begging and pleading, you know, on behalf of the former planning director, I said, he'd be really happy if you would just let us haul it off. You know, my boss would be really happy is kind of how the conversation went. So now it's up in the shallow area with some, you know, markers. So I just wanted to say thank you. And Sanjay, I think you're the only person I didn't have a chance to tell, but I didn't want to send out a mess email. I was really trying to attack every person that you walked through the door to tell you personally. None of you showed up early, even though I'm like, six o'clock, well, or five o'clock, we'll feed you food. Nobody was here, I'm like, well, they're with that offer and you can tell people in person. But no, so I just wanted to say thank you for everything. You know, Peter, you've been here longer than me. So congratulations, you get to stay longer than me.
You know, we'll, we'll see on October the fourth.
He's holding my hand and we're skipping off into the sunset, you know, we'll find out. But, you know, it's been a privilege, so thank you. Learned a lot along the way.
Thank you, Courtney. Well, as the old guy in the room, I've actually served under, and I just jotted the number down, seven different mayors, four different planning directors. And each planning director has been different, but they, I think all had one common trait, which is stood the town well. And that is they recruited and developed good people. So although I'm terrified that you're leaving and the U D O encyclopedia is leading with you, I'm gratified that I know you've got some great staff underneath you and somehow we'll muddle through until things are back to my, one, two, three, four, five, fifth planning director. But we, we all wish you the very best, Courtney.
Thank you.
You've been a tremendous asset to the town, so thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, board comments. Let's start with Kenneth.
I'll just say I'm happy to be a member of the board and looking forward to serving.
Thank you. Tim. Sanjay.
I'd just like to congratulate Courtney for.
Thank you.
New opportunity. And thank her very much for, you know, enlightening us and more importantly, tolerating us with our, you know, all kinds of weird questions. Thank you very much for that.
Chris.
No comments.
Congratulations, good luck and enjoy the counterflow short commute.
It's amazing. I mean, you almost like had this ha, 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 like this evil laugh that's happening as you're driving, looking at those suckers, you know? The suckers, I've been one of those suckers for fifteen years.
I don't know how people deal with five forty every day.
It was great when it just, I mean, used to go to Spurs Capital and didn't even come here. That's when it was the best.
All right. So I think we're on the last item on the agenda, which is adjournment. So if anybody would like to make motion to adjourn.
I will move that we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion of the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.